...from the school board candidates for the Rochester School District. I'd like to welcome all of you, especially the viewers who would be seeing this a little bit later on a tape, but then all the people here in the audience as well who came out to hear this forum. I want to thank our partners, tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library. And we'd like to thank the Rochester community and Technical College for providing camera on, and he's up there working hard for us right now. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization, organized at the local, state, and national level, and we want to encourage people to participate in government, either as a candidate or simply being an active voter, paying attention to what's going on in your government. We do take a stand on some issues after we complete an exhaustive study, but we don't take any partisan, we don't participate in any partisan way in a cat, in a catalog, well, that didn't work, in a candidate's run for office, and we don't support any particular party. The views expressed here are from the candidates alone, and not from any of the sponsors. We will have questions from the audience and questions from our sponsors as well. The purpose here is to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters, Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, along with members of our audience who've submitted questions prior to the event and will be doing so during the forum. There's never enough time to cover everything, and so we'll try as much as we can to stay on track and let you hear the candidates talk about a number of different things, but be sure and talk to the candidates after the event, or contact their website, or talk to them in person at their headquarters if you have questions that you want to ask answered. We want to thank the candidates here tonight for their willingness to commit the kind of time that it takes to be not only a candidate and run a hard campaign, but then the time that it takes and the commitment that it takes to serve in office, so we appreciate your efforts in that way. Every candidate who went through the primary campaign and election and then won to run in the general election has been invited to this forum tonight, and they are present here all. We will hear from six candidates for three seats, and they are all present here this evening. The candidates have by draw chosen who will begin, and we will begin now with the opening statements followed, and that will be one minute, followed by questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question, and the opportunity if they choose for rebuttal. In the course of this part of the debate, they will have three opportunities to rebut their opponent. There can only be one rebuttal per question, so it won't be going back and forth, but they will have an opportunity to talk to their opponent. We've asked the audience to turn off their electronic devices. You don't have to do that at home. And the timekeeper tonight is Julie Gillickson. She's from the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Julie. And Matt Stoli is from the Rochester Post Bulletin. He's sitting directly to my right. And on my far right is Mo Amundson, and she will ask questions for the Chamber of Commerce. The timekeeper will hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds left and when you have 15 seconds left, and then stop. And you can finish the sentence that you're speaking, but I'll decide where the period goes. You can't keep adding extra things, comments, and whatnot. So you then have closing statements in a minute for that. So let's begin. And Dan O'Neil, running for seat number seven, has won the toss, and he will begin with his opening statement.
Thank you, Priscilla. I'd like to thank the Rochester League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, RCTC, and the Chamber of Commerce, and everybody here tonight for the opportunity to come and speak with you all. I've had the, I'm grateful for the pleasure of having served since November of 2010 as your school board director in seat seven, and we've had a fantastic time, and we've learned a lot. Over the past time since I've served on the school board, we've transitioned from one superintendent to Jackie Silver, an outstanding interim superintendent. We, I did my best day's work, I think, when I was part of the team that hired Mike Munoz. We balanced the budgets over the past couple of years. Last year, our taxes stayed flat, and I'm optimistic that the plan for the coming years to have taxes go down. We did all that without sacrificing the needs of the students, and we've engaged in a community-wide strategic planning process, which will show and hopefully continue that the needs of the students will come first.
Thank you. Jeff Kennedy.
Okay. I would also like to thank everyone involved in setting up this forum and those audiences in attendance. I am running for the school board because I am confident I would be able to provide the teamwork, the accountability, and leadership needed. My family and I moved here to Rochester in 2001, and I began my career here at Mayo Clinic. And we chose this city because of the best education system that we found as we were looking. Like me and others, when you're out, you know, looking for relocate, you look at the education system, the schools, and that's a deciding factor. We were amazed by the caliber of teachers and curriculum being taught. I want to make sure that that continues to draw families into our city and our schools. I can add to this by my experience of successfully building teams over the last 20-plus years in my professional career, along with meeting with the school board members, cabinet, and superintendent. I've co-chaired the referendum committee. I've also participated on the budget committee as well. Also, the current board is doing a great job. However, I do see one concern on occasion that concerns me. The board seems too tired of micromanaging the superintendent to the extent that maybe possibly impairs our school district. Through my business experience, and I know that I can provide and build trust of the long term. Oops, sorry. Stop.
Thank you. The first question then comes from the League of Women Voters, and it goes to you, Jeff. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing school board members today, and how would you respond to this challenge?
Well, I think the biggest challenge there is working together as a team. I feel like that as far as the teamwork, I can bring that to the school board and help with the teachers and administrators and those open lines of communication. I feel that we need to be accountable. We need to make sure that the programs are budgeted correctly, that we keep track of the measurements. I believe leadership, I can bring that to the table and help us to implement leadership there, to make sure that our quality of education continues, and then our teachers are having job satisfaction. I need to be accessible. They need to be accessible to make themselves available to the teachers, the students, listen and understand their suggestions and their concerns. Also, I think another thing is technology. I'm in the technology field, so I think looking at technology, how do we utilize that to help us to be more efficient, to help us to increase our direction as far as education and improve the efficiency in that process.
Thank you. Ms. Tronia.
I believe the biggest challenge in the school board is that you work as a team. I think we all come with great ideas of what we might do, but as a school board, as a school district, the staff and students work together to help all students succeed. What I've learned over the past year is to listen to others, but also to express the feelings and opinions of other people in the community. So as a school board, I think that we need to make sure that we are both listening, but also speaking when appropriate, and expressing the opinions of others, and I believe we succeed together with the superintendent and board as a team.
Thank you. Now for a question from the Post Bulletin.
The Rochester Public Schools is projecting around maybe more than $10 million deficit for the 2013-2014 year. What would your be your approach to dealing with that shortfall? Would you prefer cuts, seeking more revenue through a override referendum, or some combination of both?
Jeff, that goes, Dan, I'm sorry, goes to you first.
Thanks. I appreciate the question. As you know, one of the three main responsibilities of a school board is to manage the budget effectively. And as you point out, the current forecast is about a $10 million or so dip from what we need. Fortunately, Mike Munoz and the staff and the teachers have programs in place to bring students back. You may be familiar with the "We Want You Back" campaign that brought back just a couple of students, but I'll tell you, every student matters, and financially, for every student we get back, that's an important thing for the district. So that's the first thing we do, is get students to come back. This year, we had 300 students return to the district, and each of those students pays a financial dividend. Second is to take a look at all aspects of transportation, all aspects of energy, and things that are not in the classroom. Our job as a school board is to create an environment that puts the money in the hands of Mike Munoz and the team to put it in the classroom. So that would be our last priority, would be to cut anything related to students.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question again?
There's a projected $10 million deficit for 2013 to 2014. How would you, what would be your approach to it? What would you support? Cuts, seeking more revenue through override referendum, or some combination?
Okay, thanks. So first of all, we need to look at, are we accountable? Where's our spending going right now? Is it yielding the results that we need? We need, as I mentioned before, leverage the technologies to make this more efficient. We need to make sure that our budgets are based on accurate current figures, you know? We need to get those in a timely manner. We also, Larry Smith, our executive director of business operations, is doing a great job in keeping those in line and in place. He's doing an amazing job there. We know that there is a projected downfall in 2013, and then we need to be proactive now in looking at areas that we can possibly reduce in the budget. We also need to look at other opportunities, whether it's a feasible referendum. I think we need to pose that question to the community and the voters and ask them, is it time to do that? Because indeed, we also have a shortcoming in the funds that the state has held back from us. We need to ask them and look at how we can get those into our pockets. And also, we need to, surprising to me that the current school board hasn't explored an opportunity of looking at a referendum, even putting that out to the community. I know the economy's tough at this time, but we need to have all avenues available.
Thank you. Jeff? I was just told that, Dan, you didn't get to answer the first question, and I thought you did.
The biggest challenge facing the school board, and teamwork and communication.
Yes.
I did. Thank you.
He started us off.
Yeah, very good. Just wanted to make sure I have it right.
I appreciate that.
The next question is from the Chamber of Commerce, and that goes first to Jeff.
We know that more than 70% of new jobs will be in technical fields. Those jobs are high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand jobs. The jobs will require some post-secondary education. How will you ensure that all students are college and career-ready to achieve success?
Very, very good question. The success for that is important to our economy as we move forward. There are several avenues to pursue when you go to post-secondary education, whether it be community colleges, university, or technical schools, and those learn in trade schools. We need to ensure that the students are equipped with the right tools to, and the right skill sets to go into secondary education as well as the job market. There will be some students that will choose to go right into some technical field and not pursue any other education, but we need to encourage them and support them through this process. We also need to make sure that what field they choose, and I've already expressed this to my children as they've grown up, they all had different ideas of where they wanted to go and what they wanted to pursue, but you need to choose a career that you feel comfortable in, that you're happy of doing, and can provide the means for your family. I think as a school district, we need to look at, are we providing in measurements and indicating that we are providing growth, and then when they go into secondary education, they are equipped.
Thank you.
College and career readiness is one of the most important jobs of our school district, making sure that each student who graduates from Rochester Public Schools is ready for the next step, and that they have the opportunity to take that step, whether it be going to college or career fields that require other technical training. As you know, some of our school board members are pretty actively involved in wanting to bring back technical trades, and I agree with that, and I hope to partner with businesses on an ongoing basis to make that happen. Similarly, we partner with the schools in town, and the RCTC hosting this event is just one example of that. As we continue those partnerships, we'll open up opportunities for students. And then a third area I'd like to point out is the Health Sciences Career Aspect, which is a major program in partnership with Mayo Clinic. It's been a successful program over the past five years where students are exposed to careers in healthcare, everything from lab work to nursing, to other aspects that are not necessarily doctors, but are extremely helpful in healthcare. So those three aspects, whether career, whether it's for health, or whether it's for a college-bound education, I think we're on track, and I think we need to work with others to make it happen.
Thank you.
Can you rebuttal?
Yes, go ahead. You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds? Okay. I would second what Dan said there, you know, about the health career opportunity. My son attended that class, and it was very, very productive for him. He enjoyed that class, and it was a great opportunity. And those types of things need to be exposed to more students and communicated that those opportunities are available, because I know he really flourished under that, and it kind of set his path and direction of what he wanted to do. So I second that opportunity to provide those opportunities for our students.
The next question is from the League of Women Voters, and Dan, you are the first one this time around. If the district continues to face funding shortfalls, what approach would you recommend to solving future financial problems?
Funding shortfalls are kind of a way of life. Some of you may know, my father was a school superintendent in Lestraw Prairie, Minnesota, and even back then, in a small school, they had problems financially. Mike Munoz has put in place, and the board just voted on, a new group of financial committee, a team of both staff members and community members that will partner to look deeply into each of the issues around finances and dig as deep as we can. Similarly, the strategic plan as we go forward, that should guide where we put our money, so we actually make our plan and find the way to fund it versus seeing an ever-shrinking pile of money and try to divvy it out and cut back. So both the committee, our strategic plan, and then finally, collaboration with the state of Minnesota. As you may know, the funding shift is essentially $11 million loan that Rochester Public Schools provides to the state of Minnesota. I realize they've come through a tough time, but I think it's time for us to continue the dialogue with the legislators and get some of that cash back here in Rochester, Minnesota.
Jeff?
Yeah. I also know that that's just a way of life that we are experiencing here in Rochester right now, the lack of funding and in the way the state, you know, did what they did as far as holding back 40%, you know, that hurt the district as well. But as I mentioned before, we need to open it up, the dialogue at this time, is it time to look at a referendum? Is there other ways to bring funding in to help the school district? And I think we could, you know, bring that to the voters, and whether or not the timing is right, that may not be the case. I also, the 2012 strategic plan, it is a very good start to help us in that direction. We're in the process now, from the school district standpoint, we're in the process of rolling out the additional plans as far as the implementation and the measurements. So we need to hold ourselves accountable and make sure that we are making the right progress there. And I think with the strategic plan and the community's input there, it's been vital to help us move forward in trying to address some of those lacks of funds that we're experiencing.
Okay. Rebuttal? Okay. This next question comes from a sponsor, and this time, the Chamber of Commerce goes first, and the question goes first to Jeff.
How will you build and nurture partnerships between the school district, higher education, and the business community?
That's a, it's a very good question. As a school board member, we need to keep those lines of communication open. I'd be one that would be out in the school district and in the schools, meeting with the staff, meeting with the students, finding out, you know, what their issues and what their concerns are, also addressing it with the Chamber of Commerce, with our business leaders, finding out what are we lacking in, what are some of the things that we need to do as a school district to help, to help improve that and to help to benefit all their current students. As I mentioned before, teamwork is a huge part of that. We need to build relationships, and we need to build trust in those relationships. That doesn't come overnight, so that takes you out there, actually hitting the pavement and making, and talking with individuals, those that are stakeholders in our students' education, and making sure that we are there and listening and understanding what those concerns are, and then being active on those concerns, not just letting them go off deaf ears. We need to be accountable and show results.
Thank you. Dan?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes, sure. How would you build and nurture partnerships between the school district, higher education, and the business community?
I would start by appreciating the great steps that we already have. There are a lot of great higher education institutes here in Rochester, and I'm proud to know and be friends with all of those individuals. And additionally, I think the way the community welcomed Mike Munoz from day one to continue on that positive momentum. Over the first year that Mike was here, he visited with the mayor, he visited with the Chamber of Commerce. He went to so many committee meetings in different places and met so many people that it was almost a list that was almost impossible to believe. As a board team, we have the same responsibility and the same duty to meet with those folks, meet with the Post Bulletin, meet with leadership from each of the colleges and businesses to make it happen. And then finally, I'd like to add Rochester Public School Foundation is one of the conduits that folks may not know as much about. It's a group of individuals that get together to think about what can we do as a community to help Rochester Public Schools. There's a Halloween party this weekend every night, and those of you who want to participate can see that in the Kaler subway haunted hallway. You can look that up, and you'll see some of the great collaboration in that regard.
Thank you. The next question comes from the Post Bulletin, and Dan, you will be the first to answer.
I'd like to ask you what I call the magic wand question. If you had a magic wand, and if there's one change in policy, one improvement that you would like to make to Rochester Public Schools to make it a better system, what would that one thing be?
A magic wand? Well, I just, I flew in this morning from Orlando, Florida. I was giving a presentation to the Mayo School of Health Sciences. So I was at Disney this morning, and I used to work for Disney, so I like to believe in magic. And I think what I learned from Disney and what I think I've learned in life is the magic is inside each of us, and I, so I think we already have that magic wand when we work together. If we look at each other and we ask each other to bring out the best in each other, that is the magic wand. Now, obviously, if that magic wand came with $11 million, that would be fantastic. If that magic wand came with a new curriculum that might make it all happen, that would be wonderful as well. We came pretty close in hiring a superintendent who I think is doing a fantastic job, and the teachers that I know in Rochester Public Schools are amazing. We've been known as a lighthouse of education in Minnesota over time, and I think that we can look inside, look inside each other, and in the eyes of each other, and remember how great Rochester can be and make it even better in the future.
Same question to Jeff.
The magic wand question, huh? Well, as you know, there is no magic wand, but if I could make some changes or make some things, take a back, we'd look at the opportunity gap, the achievement gap. That's one thing, if I had a magic wand, I could make sure that every student, every parent had the same level of opportunity to learn, I would make that happen. I would make sure that they, you know, socially and financially and all the factors that play into the different reasons why the gap is hard to achieve, I'd make that a level playing field, so that every student that comes into the classroom feels like they have the same opportunity as the one sitting next to them, to learn and to grow and to build those relationships. We also got to look at, as part of that, in Rochester, we've got a growing students that are in transit, those that are suffering right now, and so I'd look at, how do we help them? How do we provide opportunities for them? And I know we've got Melissa Brandt, who has done an amazing job with those transition students and those families, and I would commit to her that I would help her in any way possible to make that happen.
Thank you. The third question comes from the League. This is a long question, so you have to really loosen up now. Intellectual abilities, motivation, and past experiences of individual students play an important part in educational outcomes. How could you, as a school board member, support and provide opportunities that prepare students of all backgrounds and academic levels to function in a diverse society? And Jeff, that's your question first.
Well, that was long-winded. It really was. You know, looking, looking at diverse society and making sure our students, I think, I think we need to look at the data that's there and review it and make sure that it's accurate, but also, most importantly, have one-on-one sessions with those that are, that are moving on, and what contributed to the factors of their success, and how they learned and how they grew. Each individual is different on how they progress and how they learn. I've got four children at home. Each of them have a different learning style, they have different motivational skills and things that help them grow, and I think we need to look at, you know, look at those individuals that are succeeding and understand what was it that motivated them, what was the driver there to ensure it. I'm sure that we can look back that there was probably someone who was a mentor in their life, or a teacher, or someone there that helped them and guided them through that process, and made them realize that they could be the best person they could be. So I think that would be where I'd start.
Okay. Dan, you're right there. Hear the question again?
Please, that'd be fantastic.
Intellectual abilities, motivation, and past experiences of individual students play an important part in educational outcomes. How could you, as a school board member, support and provide opportunities that prepare students of all backgrounds and academic levels to function in a diverse society?
It's a great question, and I think it comes down to every student, every day, and every teacher feeling empowered to make a difference in a student's life. There's probably no greater impact or no greater possibility of succeeding in life as a student or as a child if there's an adult that cares. And some folks are lucky enough to have that at home in their family. Other folks find that in the community or find that in one teacher. And I think as much as possible, we need to set up mentorship programs where we compare adults in the community with students that may not have that kind of opportunity. There have been programs like that. One is called Strive. It's sponsored by Rochester Rotary. Folks can sign up if you're watching on TV and want to be one of those mentors. I actually did three Strive students. One of them disappeared. I took off, and I never saw him again. The second was a friend for life, and the third was probably the most endearing to me. It was a young Somali gentleman who, after he went through the program and successfully completed it, he walked across the street after graduation to say hi to me, introduce me to his friend, and I thought that was great.
All right. Now we have some audience questions. The first one, and this will go first to you, Dan. At last night's League of Women Voters Forum, both candidates for the Senate and the House of Representatives said they will pay back the monies owed to schools. What will you do with these additional funds?
Wow, that's exciting. I can't wait for it to happen.
Magic wand.
Well, actually, we've already started the conversation called the strategic plan. As you may know, we had over 25 individuals meet together and start that dialogue, and now we have three goal teams that are getting together, and then a measurement team. And I volunteered for the measurement team because I like numbers and I like math. If they pay back all the money, how much did you say we got?
Didn't say.
Well, I think we have to figure out how much we have.
They give you the whole 40%.
But from a positive aspect, just that dialogue that they're willing, as you may know, Mike Munoz has brought together surrounding community boards and superintendents and school administrators to have conversations with those legislators, and it's good to hear that all candidates on all sides agree that we can find things to invest in. There's gifted education, there's education for those who are not able to achieve quite as well as others, there's technological education, health education. That first question that we had, we could pay for all that and a little more.
Thank you. Jeff?
So yeah, if that funding came available, I think it would be a relief off of all of our minds, you know, looking at next year's deficit that's coming up and having that opportunity, because in the last several years, we've had a deficit, we've had to have budget cuts, and we've had committees and the community involvement in that. And so, you know, in the past, and I met with Superintendent Munoz, and we talked about that, you know, we can't just sit there and keep cutting and cutting and cutting. So if that funding is available, then we need to look at what areas do we need to focus on, and it could be some of those areas that we've cut in the past, you know, because some of those areas may be well-funded and are well-needed in the community, and so we need to pose those questions as well. I think also, as far as the 2012 strategic plan, I think there's opportunities in there to where we can find excess funding that we could use in establishing some of those programs for the gifted and some of those programs to help some of the areas in the achievement gap. I know that if we had that, that would be a relief of a lot of people's minds.
Rebuttal, Dan?
Rebuttal's a strong word, because I want to echo and keep going, and I think the other things that we need to remind ourselves of is some of the great tools and instruments we have. We have fantastic planetarium at Mayo High School. We have Corey Hill Nature Center. We have collaborations with Bookmobile and Rochester Public Library. We would be able to invest, if we got the money back into schools, I believe we'd be able to invest in that and create opportunities for all. And of course, we'd bring back Middle School Shop. That would be a given. But I think we would be able to have a dialogue as a community to spend that money right, but not wasted, because at the end of the day, it does come from the taxpayers, and we appreciate every penny that comes to us.
The second audience question, which goes first to you, Jeff. There have been some opinions expressed about the district's new mission statement. The wording is somewhat nebulous and not specific enough to set a direction for strategic planning purposes. How do you feel about the mission statement and the process in place for strategic How do you feel about the mission statement and the process in place for strategic planning?
I actually like the mission statement. I mean, you opened it up to the community, we had participating from the community. I actually think it's a well-thought-out mission statement. I think as far as the strategic plan, we are now in, as I mentioned before, the critical part of that. We've laid out the vision, we've laid out the goals, we know where we want to get to, and now it's actually putting that plan into action, identifying the areas that we need to focus on. We also need to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable, we have measurements in place. Are we progressing? Are we moving forward in that arena? So it's critical that we make sure we're participating at that level.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. Some opinions have been expressed about the district's new mission statement. The wording is somewhat nebulous and not specific enough to set a direction for strategic planning purposes. How do you feel about the mission statement and the process in place for strategic planning?
Well, the mission statement is still draft. It was brought together by a group of over 25 individuals through a consensus process that I think brought in the word "community," and to some folks, maybe had a higher goal than might be just focusing on the school. So I recognize where folks might be coming from. That said, I believe we're headed on a good pathway, and I had about 25 impassioned voices that all spoke in unison about how they believe in it. I myself volunteered for the measurement team because I think in the end, if we're going to be successful in accomplishing that mission, we need to be able to show folks how the schools are different five years from now than they are today. And I think as important is that we need to communicate to the community, and all the members of that team and our entire school board and Mike Munoz promised that we would work together here in Rochester, up at St. Paul, wherever we need to go, to make sure that we know that every student will be ready to be a partner and a good participant in a global community in the future. It's a high goal to be that, expect that much of our students, but together we can achieve.
Thank you.
Rubble?
Yes.
Good.
Come ahead.
30 seconds, right?
That's right.
First of all, whoever wrote that question, I'd like to talk to them afterwards, understand, because when I read the mission statement here, "Our mission is to inspire, challenge, empower all students in the knowledge skills required to reach their full potential, to contribute to the future generations, and to become involved members of a global community." That is an excellent community, that is an excellent mission statement. It's not going to set out the details behind it, and that's what the next phase of this is going to be. So I think I'd like to talk to them, understand, you know, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. Thank you.
So now we have a third question from the audience. Given the apparent movement of students from Rochester School District to other districts, how should our district balance or slow this movement of students? That one goes to you, Dan.
Okay, that's a great question. I think people do vote with their feet, and historically, we've, on net, had students leave the district, both the online education programs as near as Houston, Minnesota, and as far away as the northern part of the state of Minnesota. But I think the first step that Mike and the team undertook was to try to understand it. We had some surveys with family members as to why their students were not coming to our schools, and you need to understand and analyze where they're going and what their alternative programs and opportunities are. Then you need to put plans in place to act. Some of those plans in place are to be kind and respectful to each other as school board members. Some of those are to hire an excellent superintendent who hires great people. Those great people have, at least so far, resulted in a net of about 300 individuals deciding to come back to Rochester Public Schools. We then had the "We Want You Back" campaign, which in partnership with United Way, 115 people went house-to-house and said, "Please, come on back, we want you back." But I think the final part of that is going to be consistency. It takes a number of years to get folks to believe that we have small classes and effective education.
Thank you. Same question to you, Jeff.
Thanks. I'd like to echo too. I think the "We Bring You Back" program that was going on was an excellent thing to go out and reach out to the students and those that have left. I think we need to ask the questions of why they're leaving. I think, being in the computer person that I am, we need to see the trend. Is there a trend? Is there a pattern that's causing these individuals to leave? We also need to be proactive before they leave. We need to have those communications there. What are they struggling in? What are some of the things that needs to be addressed, so it doesn't get to that extreme to where they said, "Oh, I'm fed up with the schools, I'm moving on." So we need to do that proactively before we get to that point. And I also think that we need to look at ourselves and measuring ourselves, are we keeping the standards and accountability that we need? We need to keep our lines of communication open, be accessible to understand what it is. And again, I'll echo too, that, you know, the district was surprised about the attendance enrollment that increased this year. We need to ask there too, what brought them back? You know, we need to understand that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Rubble? The next question, audience question number four, goes to you, Jeff, first. How do you feel Rochester Public School is doing with parent involvement currently, and what is going well and what would you improve?
Well, I think that's a very good question, being a parent myself, right? I should be able to talk to that one. Well, I think that the getting the message out and getting the communication out is huge. I think a role of a parent or a guardian or someone else is there to support their student and their children, to make sure that they are getting the right atmosphere and getting the right programs in place that they need to excel. I think we need to recognize the role of the parents as a major contributor in the students' education. I mean, that factors into the achievement gap. That's one of those things that you can go down and list off, and there are many of them. That's why the achievement gap is such a tough one to tackle. There are many, there are any reasons why that's not. And to reach out to the parents, reach out to the guardians, and try to get them more involved. I think we've done a good job of that with Superintendent Munoz coming on board, extending that communication, getting that message out, and hopefully, some of the parents will take hold of that and participate in their child's education.
Dan?
I think I'd like to highlight what we do well is PTSAs and area councils. At many of the schools and sites, there's exciting kinetics when you're at those meetings, when you talk to the people who are involved. What I think we need to do better is start earlier and be consistent. Some folks move into town and they may not be welcome, particularly middle of the year, it's harder to figure out and harder to notice. And we, as a school district, can continue to do better to improve our communication to all families. And I think that's a word I'd like to highlight, which is family. There's families of all types in our community, all different ways to communicate to them. And I'm a proud participant in the ESOL group, which is Second Language Learners of England, and they reach out to people throughout the community who may not speak English or may not find the way that I would talk about it in my family as the way to make it happen. So I think we need to be multicultural, we need to communicate more effectively and consistently, and we need to take pride in the PTSA groups. And again, there's a haunted hallways, and you can come see that. There's a lot of parents that are helping us put up Halloween exhibits.
Thank you. The next question from the audience. This goes first to you, Dan. What would be your policy on anti-bullying, and how would you implement that policy?
Well, I think anti-bullying is a problem in our society, and it's a problem in our schools. I think it starts from education and a common understanding. There have been task forces available at the state level that have had dialogues around the state and here in Rochester to help us come to a definition of what bullying is and to ensure that we don't allow it, we don't tolerate it. We don't tolerate it in adults, we don't tolerate it in children. Bullying often starts in a way that people around don't notice and don't see. And I think if we ensure that we're all educated when those around us are being bullied, or when children are around and they're being bullied, and to take that to an adult, take that to an authority figure, take it to a leadership person in the school to help intervene and try to help act. In Minnesota, we're often thought of as Minnesota nice, but when you see bullying happen, you have to take the moment to step in. And we need to teach folks that it's okay to step in, or to get an adult to step in to come help. So that's probably, education is the first step, but then commitment is the follow-on.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think the bullying going on in the school district is there, and it's something we can't ignore. There is a policy in place on that. We need to review that policy and make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable for that and enforcing that policy. I talked to a parent the other day who shared with me that they actually consider moving their child out of Rochester because of the bullying that was going on. There was no action being taken, other than, you know, assigning the student to a different school bus. And so we need to address it head-on. We can no longer just, you know, sit there and think that this is going to go away. Same thing, you know, with my experience in the workforce. That's called harassment. You see that going on, and there's policies in place to deal with it. So we need to, we need to be, and I hate to, you know, you use the word Minnesota nice. We can't be nice and step around those. We need to address those head-on with the circumstances around it and really put those policies in place and act on them. We can't tolerate that. We need to have a safe environment, a safe education environment for our kids.
Thank you. We had a total of 12 questions, lots of good things from the audience, and it's time for closing remarks. And each of you will have one minute, and Jeff, you are the first one to speak in this part.
Okay, thanks. Well, first of all, I'm really impressed with the turnout here tonight, and then the community involvement, and some of the insightful questions. And we're going to see, you'll have two other debates to follow this one. You've got some good candidates here running for school board, and that's good for the community. What I'll bring, I'll bring my work ethic to this, the ability to work as a team and as a leader. I am willing to use my extensive experience at work, work hard, study the issues, and ask the tough questions. I've always been one to give 100% to a task, and I will do that as a school board member when I'm elected. I'm excited about the opportunity to work with the superintendent, and I'm excited to work with the school board and the staff, and then the opportunity it brings. I look forward to visiting the schools and the staff. I support Superintendent Munoz 100%. Again, I have been involved in the school district through committees, I've head up committees, I've been part of committees, and I will continue to do that, and meet and greet and have an open-door policy with the staff and the cabinet members, and I also would appreciate your support on November 6th.
Thank you. Dan?
I would like to thank everyone here tonight, League of Women Voters, Post Bulletin, Chamber of Commerce, folks watching at home, and my mom. As my original teacher, she helped prepare me well for this role, as have the other 10 school board members that I've had the pleasure of serving with since November of 2010. I've worked with three outstanding superintendents, 10 outstanding school board members, and I want to thank each of them. The school board does three things. It provides strategic leadership through policy, it provides financial oversight, it supervises and hires and holds the superintendent accountable for results. I think we've done well in all three of those aspects. I hope you would agree. I'm committed to continue to collaborate with others on the board and listen for their opinions before sedating mine and being part of that. I'm committed to inviting change and asking questions and doing the math. I'm very appreciative of being able to speak here tonight and to be able to go first, because I can sit and listen and hopefully welcome two new school board members to the school district board, and to be on the board for another four years, which Mike Munoz will be there the entire time. Thank you. Vote Dan O'Neill. See my website at danoneal.com.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you to the audience for your really, really fine questions and being so attentive. We have wrapped up this particular round for the school board, and we will adjourn now for a few minutes to get the next group in.